Good afternoon. I didn't see my little light on, so. The magical hour of 3:00 on the 12th, a special city council meeting. Want to call to order? Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Councilmembers Smith.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Hockes.
Here.
Councilmember Meisner and Extramar Skews, we have a quorum.
Okay, very good. So there's only one thing on the agenda. We're here today to talk about the Four Mile PDD, which is a planned district development, Sun Canyon Economic Development Assistance Proposal, if any. And we need staff report this time.
Mayor and council, as you're well aware, Kevin Quinn is the sole owner of Sun Canyon slash Four Mile Ranch. It is a proposed over 1,600 acre planned development that could potentially, over a build-out period of 20, 25 years, produce over 2,200 homes. That would represent almost a 30% increase in the population of Canyon City. So clearly, that represents an enormous impact, not just in growth, but more importantly, to our economy, as far as jobs, business earnings, and local taxes. The city alone, in looking at their pro forma, could potentially generate, just in the first 18 years, once they really get up and start building, approximately $22 million in general fund taxes, largely sales tax, building permit tax, and use taxes, and another $18 million in water sales. That's just the city. The county could generate $23 million in taxes, in use, and property. The school district, $17 million, and the fire district, $9. So it has an enormous economic impact on the city, if it comes to fruition. That's the issue today. The centerpiece of this development is the golf course. It's the crown jewel. This golf course is premised on an active lifestyle customer, generally probably going to be 55-plus, where golf is very central to their decision-making. These type of communities, whether you're familiar with Del Webb, for example, are the golf courses are the centerpiece of these developments. People come because of the golf. We're very advantageous in Canyon City, because we can play golf 12 months a year. I don't know of any other region of the state of Colorado that you can do that. Right now, 90% of the 30,000 people that golf there are from Colorado Springs in Denver, for a reason. Because they can play golf here during periods of the year they can't up there. They're also probably the number-one prospect for ownership of a home in this proposed development. So the golf course is critical. That being said, Kevin is not a developer. Kevin is from Wall Street. He's a financier. It's all about the bottom line. The course, like many courses, lose money. Very few golf courses actually make money. In this case, it's consistent with that. He's tired of the financial hemorrhaging of the golf course. He's also tired of the tax burden he carries, because, as I've talked to Dennis and others, Colorado has some unique laws about how vacant property is treated. It's almost a huge disadvantage for a developer, because they're treated as if they were commercial property. And there's an enormous tax burden while you're not producing any revenue. So you really have to have deep pockets to sustain a long-term plan. Again, Kevin's not a developer. He does not envision being on top of this or being the developer for the next 20, 25 years. He wants to position this so he can sell it in the next couple of years. In order to do that, the course has to be sustainable and operational. If it turns into Shadow Hills, I think we have potential ghost town on our hands, because there's going to be very little that will allure people to that development. It's had a very marginal record of success. It's on the, I think, on the verge of taking off, if we can get some model homes built, which Kevin intends to do this summer, and start generating some interest in the properties and some growth and development, and create some traction, and attract a longer-term prospective developer to take over and run the 20, 25-year life of this. So that being said, what the city's proposing is to enable the course to survive, sustain, because he has committed to shutting it down. I don't think in the year and a half I've ever spent time with him that he's one to pull punches. He's very direct, very honest, and I think he's sincere when he says that he really has no interest in continuing to personally subsidize this operation if he doesn't see a long-term game plan here that allows him to turn his investment into something that he can sell and profit from. It's going to be a continuation of financial hemorrhaging. I think he'd just soon cut his losses and go back to Boston. And if that golf course lays vacant for six months, it will be a Shadow Hills. You're starting from scratch. You just don't get to, you know, revitalize a golf course after it's gone without water for six or nine months. So there's that risk. So what we're proposing is, we subsidize up to $140,000 his water bill, which is about what he would expend under our new rates for this 2018 year. That would drop down to $80,000 in the second year, and then $40,000. So we'd effectively be subsidizing the water bills almost 100% in the first year, then 50%, then 25%. And for that, he would guarantee that he would continue to operate and maintain the golf course. He'd bill some model homes out there to get the real estate activity going. But he'd be looking to attract and acquire a long-term buyer for the entire development. And while this is going on, if you were to prove it, we would in parallel work with the county and the school district and the fire district and ourselves to come up with a longer-term strategy to reduce his tax burden. Because that's significant, and that's not sustainable. Any questions?
Okay. Counsel? Mr. Weed, did you have?
Well, I got, I kind of, before we get fired up here, I almost want to hear what people have to say, but it's, and then get into our conversation on it. But yeah, I've certainly got some thoughts.
During our temporary setup here, we have a cordless microphone right there, Ryan. If you can help me, it should be live. We're going to keep it live, and as you set it down, please don't set it down gently so we don't all just break our eardrums. So if you want to speak, go ahead and grab the microphone there and just state your name and address, and we'll just go from there.
We'd like to start. We want to hear from you. Don't all go quiet on me now.
All right, well.
Any comments, or?
I should mention, as people consider speaking, that the funding for this would not come from the water rates. We'll make that crystal clear. No commercial residential water rate customer would be subsidizing this. The monies will come from the general fund, monies we had earmarked for the lodging tax match. So those are largely sales tax dollars. So the city would be using those resources to subsidize this particular package.
Just for the record, I asked the mayor, I want to make sure. Mr. Quinn is not here?
No. He was here last Wednesday.
Okay. That's, well, there's a bunch of people here who are obviously interested. I'm almost inclined to be...
There we go.
There you go.
...the teacher in the classroom, and I'm just start calling on people. And you're going to have to say something.
That's why I'm, yeah, I got up first.
Yes.
My name's Bob Isles. I retired here with my wife Brenda 10 years ago. We live up off of 2700 County Road 11.
Bob Isles, I-L-E-S.
Excuse me, what was it again? I-L-E-S, Isles. Like British Isles. What was your address again? Huh? Your address again? 2700 County Road 11. Okay, go ahead, Bob. We retired here 10 years ago. I was an executive with ExxonMobil for 32 years. I played a lot of golf around the world, and I play golf a couple times a week out at Four Mile. It's a beautiful course. It's an asset to our community. And I think you've got a double-barrel thing going on here. You've got a potential tax income structure. You've got to look at the numbers. And you've got a beautiful asset that's pulling people in from Pueblo and Colorado Springs, just to say what you did. On the other side of the coin, I think that the owner needs to really contemplate, to make it a first-class, world-class golf course, a clubhouse. You can't live with a trailer out there for, in a half-assed driving range. The course itself is very well-maintained. It's a beautiful Jimmy design, and it would be a shame to turn it back into a goat ranch desert, and that's what's going to happen. But it's worse than that. It's actually worse than Shadow Hills, because you've got, I don't know, half dozen houses built out there, and it's just going to die. And it's going to go right back to the way it was. So I think this is something you've really got to consider, and yeah, the window's 20 years, I guess, for the build-out. But I don't see anything around here on the horizon that equals it, other than river development. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Next to the microphone.
Jeff Mueller.
Mr. Mueller.
You know, I hesitate to get up. My name's Jeff Mueller, and I live at 17 Kestrel Court. I was born and raised in Canyon City. I've been a CPA, financial advisor, and have dealt with financial strategies for companies for over 45 years. I think I might be on the wrong ball. I don't have any problem with the fact that the course is beautiful, that I would love to see the development, and that I can see the ancillary benefits to everyone involved. The problem that I have is I sat with staff when we talked about trying to help Shadow Hills, and the answer was no, and it's now deserted. I think the concept of public-private partnerships is interesting, but I don't think that we're prepared to enter into public-private partnerships at this time, structurally probably. I also think that when someone is a developer, that you're supposed to bring all your chips to the table. And if you don't have enough chips, we call that being under-capitalized, and when that occurs, bad things happen and people lose out. That's what we call the free enterprise system. And I can tell you that out of 900, or out of 100 proposals, you and I all know that 99 of them die by lack of funding. So to blow smoke up people's rear end about a 25-year project that would deliver that kind of benefits for the community, if it occurred, I would be 100% on board of the fact that it's awesome. I just think that he is looking for capitalization in the wrong places. And if someone is going to take the crown jewel of what he hopes to sell, the crown jewel of what he hopes to be a subdivision, which I am 100% behind, I understand that. But for him to turn it to pasture or to let it die, that's on him. It's not on this city. And I think for us to chase someone who is woefully inadequately capitalized is just a suggestion that this $200,000 or $300,000 is the beginning. There is no way in the world that that's going to solve the problem. Otherwise, he would have solved it. For him to be behind the eight ball and to now reach 15 days or 18 days from now, when he's going to shut down a golf course during a period when it doesn't need water, but I think that that's a threat. It may very well be legitimate. It may be real. I'm not suggesting he's not honest. I'm suggesting that if he's not the developer, that he has come to a project, taken off the heels of the private, the last folks who tried to develop it in '08, who went bankrupt themselves, right? And so we all know kind of what's happened. There's a lot of things that suggest that we're very close to that again, and that if a guy can't pay his water bill, it might suck for this community to lose another golf course and to lose the possible growth. But I believe that our engagement as a city and taxpayer money is either opening the door that I need some private funding from the city to help my businesses. We have a 400-acre subdivision called Miners Ridge that we sure as hell could use some city water on. And I just don't know how you're going to say no to people if you continue to try to say, to try to say yes. As painful as it is, and as much as I would love to see the golf course, I mean, I can throw a rock from my house, I go down there and play, I think it's great. That's not the issue. The issue is, we have to focus on the right ball, which is, is the city the right partner to partner with someone who's woefully inadequately capitalized?
Thank you, Jeff.
Mayor, I think we might be able to clarify something before we continue on, and that's just to clarify some background information based on those comments. Mr. Hartman, how many years has the city been subsidizing water at the golf course already? And actually, it was not just for Four Mile, but Shadow Hills was as well?
The golf course rate has been what it is for as long as I can remember. As some, we have talked about this before. The original golf course rate came as a result of Shadow Hills Golf Course receiving water through the Cotter Main. At that time originally, it was a raw water supply. In 1990, that was changed over to potable water, but the rates really did not change. And so the golf course rate has been predominantly low for at least 30 years that I'm aware of.
For at least 30 years. And my next question, Bob, was that the problem arose, because we're going to be raising water rates, and there was a recognition in the study that the golf course has not been paying their, you know, fair share of their rate for those 30 years. And so the city's going to raise their rates to be equitable to other commercial businesses. And that's where this kind of came to arise, where we have been creating an opportunity for a public asset by working with private industries, both Shadow Hills and Four Mile. And now it's changing, starting in January 1st, or well, April 1st, 2019, because of the water rate change.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you for your help.
Thank you, Bob. Any other settings in the audience? Oh, come on, you're here.
Jim, Hor, you got anything to say?
No.
No? Colby? Bill?
Colby, yes, yes, we got, we got to take her, yes.
So it's, I'm going to just call out my name. You just got to call on me.
Yeah.
Colby Catchmar, 509 Main Street. And I would just like to say that I would implore you all to consider this seriously. I think you remove another element of this community from recreation, you know, I think it's going to, going to be tough to recover from. I was a real advocate to keep Shadow Hills open. I thought we made a really bad decision not supporting that opportunity. And I'm an advocate for maintaining and helping this guy along through this tough time. You know, give him the few years, see if he can get this thing rolling, then you can revisit it. But I think to pull the rug out from under him at this point would be a terrible idea for the community.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Was Shadow Hills, wasn't it a, going to be a purchase agreement where the city would own that, and it wasn't helping someone out, it was purchasing it from them?
There were many...
That was one of the...
Was it?
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Valerie Hornsby, and we just bought a house at 3620 Telegraph Trail, and the back of our house faces the second hole there on the golf course. And we actually stopped building in Pueblo West to come down here and found this home and fell in love with it. We also know that there's several other lots that have sold on that street, and also are being custom, a lot of homes are being built now on that road. So I would be very disappointed to see the golf courts closed, because we came down here because we love Canyon and love the area. The golf course is absolutely gorgeous, and I think it would be a great loss to the community if it were to let, go back to the goats, as somebody said. So I just wanted to let you know that we love living out there, and it's a beautiful course. And it's, again, it's well-maintained, so we would like to see it stay, so.
Okay. And that was Valerie, what was your last name again?
Hornsby.
Hornsby?
Bill, you've been through this. You got any thoughts on this?
No, I haven't got any thoughts.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm going to call on you again, then. Sorry to usurp your mayorship.
Usurp away. I want to talk to everybody. Come on, that's why we have these meetings. We did not talk, the council did not talk, would not talk to each other until right now. And so that's why we have opened forum, want what they call, this is it. This is all open in the open, and there's nothing behind doors, and we never talk to each other at all. So except now, till now.
You really want me to follow that?
Would you please, Mr. Arie?
So I'm John Arie. I live at 2985 Sierra Court. I like Colby, and well, probably several other people in this room. Was pretty outspoken in years past to try to help save Shadow Hills. It is, wasn't overly complicated, what we wanted at the time. What seemed to be complicated was the fact that anybody would recognize it as an asset other than just something for a few handful of people to golf. And I think that the, I would like the city to do is look at the asset itself, although I agree with everything Mr. Mueller had to say, he's 100% spot-on. And I think the city has to be very careful how you do this and why you choose to do it. I don't necessarily believe the threat of it being shut down. I don't think that's a reason to do it in any way, shape, or form. I think the opportunity that the city has to show good faith to a developer, to try to send Canyon City down the next path for parks, any form of recreation, this is an opportunity for the city to do that. They missed the boat, they dropped the ball on Shadow Hills, and we lost a huge asset, and we had 10, 15, 20 families move immediately because we lost that asset. Although there is some houses being built out there right now, and there's more now than has been in, well, since its existence, I think protecting it is where the city needs to lean. But I would, I would caution to just throw them 140 grand without having any kind of strings attached to it. I mean, if you're going to give them water, you know, I would suggest that we have an understanding of what they're going to do. Because they are just a developer from somewhere in Boston, and it's more than one guy, it's a plan. But the other thing I would say is, I would look at it long-term. You know, if, you know, we talk about the rate that Shadow Hills had, although they did have a lower rate, as the city has said, it still wasn't sustainable. It still wasn't a rate that was sustainable to keep a golf course afloat. If you look at the golf courses in the surrounding communities, they're owned by the cities. Their water bills are paid by city water. They certainly don't pay the same tap fee that Mr. and Mrs. Jones does living down the street. They have a separate rate for what they are. And I would think the city should take a hard look at that, and if you just drive the price back up in five years, you're going to be right here having the same conversation five years from now. And if we had some sort of special rate for golf courses, Shadow Hills would still be here today. So I'd be, my suggestion is, take a hard look at it. I wouldn't just say, give them 150 grand this year, and then we'll charge them again in three years. Because in three years from now, there are going to be enough taxes out there to, you know, support it then anyway. You're five, 10, 15 years down the road.
Thank you, John Paul. Dennis, you want to call out another name? He knows your names, by the way. He may just call me. Go ahead. There you go.
Paul King, 395 Sandstone Circle. I was sure shocked to hear that they might close it, and I certainly hope it does not close. And I hope the city can see its way clear to relieve some of their burden on the water issue. My question is the tax issue. There's all that vacant land out there that used to be taxed as a grazing land, and then suddenly it went up to the higher rate. And my question is, I don't really know the numbers for sure on how much it went up, but my question is why it went up and why it needs to be up so high on that vacant land when I doubt if it cost the city very much to have that land sitting there. And I would certainly hope that there could be some tax relief and that land be taxed for its usage once it's developed. And so I guess, I guess that's all I have to say.
Yes, the real estate tax is determined by the county, and that is another avenue that we did discuss quite a bit, that you're right, Paul. That was grazing, that was a stills ranch at one time, Bert Still, and it, all of a sudden, it changed. Of course it changed because of the unit development, the possibility of residential, that kind of stuff. And I believe that discussion will be with the county, and should be with the county, to get it back to a grazing land. I mean, the difference could be $15 compared to $1,500. I think taxes are $75,000 or something like that. That's absurd. But that's a county thing, and you have to go to the assessor to get that done.
Oh, okay.
We don't have the ability to do that. But we'll certainly support that.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm certainly here to say, I certainly support the golf course staying there somehow.
Well, if we could appoint a committee, you can be on it.
Your advice.
Dennis, call out another name. We're going to put everybody's name in a hat, by the way.
Well...
All right. Give him the microphone. That's okay.
Anyway, I'm Bill Holt. I own Shadow Hills Golf Course. And I hate to see the other golf courses go down. I really do. I've got a developer here tonight with me, and we're looking at Billy Gomes out there. And I talked to some of the other builders about putting apartment in the clubhouse. It's a huge building. And I would like to see a way to get some water, because we can't afford to pay the rates now. We've got a lot of home sites and a lot of things that we can do out there. We could put apartments and homes around the golf course. But that's about all I need to talk about.
Bill, would you consider reopening? Is that a proper question? You don't have to answer these questions, by the way.
Oh, no, that's what I want to do.
What's that?
But I wouldn't put 18 holes in. I put two nine holes with different tee boxes.
Okay.
And that would be doable.
Okay, okay. Fair enough.
Mayor, I would like to ask if they feel comfortable, our council members-elect, to maybe say what their feelings are, since they'll be having to live with this decision in the future.
Okay. Dolly? I know your name. And John is here as well, somewhere hiding in the background, probably. There he is.
There's John. Oh, he always makes me go first. Dolly Gonzalez, do you need my address?
No.
After...
Council-elect.
What's that?
Council-elect, right chair or something. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
After thinking and reading articles and reading comments and, you know, weighing the options between what might happen if this doesn't go through, I would be concerned. I would be concerned for our community as a whole. Because not only are we attracting a different caliber of people to our community, I think that we're, you know, I know that, that nobody else is knocking down our door to try to get out there to build something. So I just really feel that if we let this slip through our fingers, that we've really done our community a disservice.
Okay. You see what you got yourself into, both of you?
Hi, I'm John Hammerick, 1000 Dewey Road here in Canyon City. The, when I was the manager of Cotter, we of course were neighbors to Shadow Hills. We saw a lot of what was going on over there. We were pretty well-interested in what was going on because of the cleanup obligations that Cotter had. We were pretty well interested in what was going on because of the cleanup obligations that Cotter had. The, I know that, I know that Shadow Hills, when it existed as a, as a organization, before Mr. Holt, Holt purchased it, they, they actually employed a professional, um, management company to see if they could sell the course. Uh, and it was marketed essentially nationwide through this company. Uh, and, and they were not able to make a sale on the golf course. It was, uh, you know, the, the, really the economics were just not there. And I think that we're, we're faced with, with something similar here with Four Mile. It, and, and that is that, that, uh, like Mr. Mueller said, uh, it's, it seems as though the company is coming to the city and asking for capital financing through reduced water rates and essentially a zero water rate the first year. Uh, and I think if the city was, wanted to be able to maximize that potential there, that, that it would need to be something that would, in, in, in the form of a legal agreement where the parties could agree to quid pro quo. In other words, value for value. If the city is going to forego revenues, which in a way is gonna be a, a tax on our citizens, uh, that, that there needs to be something substantial that the city can then have in its hand, no matter what happens to the golf course, uh, to be able to justify the expenditure of those funds. I don't know what shape that might take or what, what the possibilities are. But, but those are my, my thoughts on the issue.
Thank you, John. Yes, Mayor?
I just, I just think, um, you know, with, with building this, um, golf course, it's, it's, or, you know, developing the homes and, and just all the development that's gonna happen out there, I think it's gonna bring in a lot more employment to our community as well. And that is a big concern to our, to our citizens is not having enough employment. And I, I think this would be a, a good way to boost the employment in our community as well.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lloyd Fulmer. I live at 483 Field Avenue here in Canyon City. I was a little disappointed to hear that, um, the possibility that the golf course may close, even though I don't really have a personal interest in golfing. But I feel like that, um, maybe we might be being held hostage by the fact that this information was, just came upon so suddenly. Um, we've only had, um, what, a couple of weeks now before the course is destined to be closed. Um, it would seem if this gentleman that operated the golf course, if he were a, a fair to middling financial manager, would have had this information a long time ago. And would have been able to project this financial loss and the potential loss in the future. Being a financial manager for various companies in the past, um, one would think that, um, this information would have been available. Any partnership between public and private is somewhat of a slippery slope. And if the council in their wisdom decides to go ahead with this proposal, then I think it would just be, uh, it's, it's a large financial investment. You, as council members, would be making a financial investment in this private organization. And as such, I think that you should have a say-so in the operation of that business. If the, um, if the council and the owner of the property can agree, I think that there should be some agreement in place so that the city has a say-so in the operation of the golf course. So, that's my comments. Kinda short, but that's how I feel as just a private citizen here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lloyd. Next? Not next. Should we talk? Oh, Mr. King again.
Uh, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing and I didn't have my notes up there. Um, I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the city to continue leading our community away from the stigma of the prison town. Uh, you mentioned Canyon City. Oh, yeah, it immediately comes up. And I said, "No, they're not gonna build a wall around the whole town." Uh, we're, we're, we're trying to get, get away from that stigma and I think keeping the golf course open at any cost was, is a good, good way to help with, uh, eliminate that stigma. Or move it in another direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Paul? Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm gonna say something now because I got another...
Jeff, let Jeff, please.
Okay, I got a commitment and I'm gonna have to leave, so after him, I'd like to stop.
Okay, sorry. Jeff?
I, I just wanna make two points. Uh, first, sometimes people write about these meetings. I don't want anybody to confused about whether I do or don't like this golf course, whether I am or am not a cheerleader of Canyon City and whether I would, would be thrilled with the possibility of expansion and all that. It has to do a little bit with my concern about the if. If he's able to do a development, if he's able to sell the course, if he's able to find a developer, if he's able to do all that, this could be awesome. I don't want there to be any confusion about how I feel about that. I'm just concerned about tossing in some taxpayer money and, and maybe we should get some ownership. Uh, I just sat on a shark tank thing at the University of Colorado and, and maybe we should be like the sharks and we should get some ownership or something, or five or six lots or, or something else. I, I don't care, but, um, I'm well aware of the discount that, I was on the board of Shadow Hills and so I'm well aware of the discount. And discounts may be fine, but I'm a little concerned that this money will evaporate so incredibly quickly. That's my, that's been my concern.
Thank you, Jeff. Good point. Thank you. Okay, Frank, you gotta leave. Want you to speak up?
Yeah, um, I came here to let them know that I have another commitment, so I gotta leave. My concern with this here, I like what Mr. Mueller has said, uh, but I'm looking at it this way. First of all, when we got the message from the developer, to me, the part I didn't like is, it's a threat. Either you do this for me or I'm gonna close the golf course. That's a threat. And I don't like to be threatened. The city shouldn't have to be threatened by anyone. The other thing is, he's not here. He doesn't have a representative of him here to speak up for what they're asking for. We got a lot of folks talking about good things with regard to it. And I love the golf course too. It's a beautiful course. When they first opened it, I toured the whole thing. So there's nothing wrong with the course. But either he should be here or someone from his organization. They should be the ones selling this to each and every one of us. Not the folks that say, "I think it's good" and all this other stuff. I appreciate that part. But he's asking for something and I don't see him, I don't see anybody from his organization here trying to sell that point.
I just wanna make a comment to that. Uh, my understanding is, I could be wrong, okay?
Could you get the microphone? Ma'am, could you give him the microphone there? I'm sorry.
I may be incorrect, but I've talked to the folks out at golf course a number of years about this. And they've told me that they've made, uh, many attempts to get a reduction in the water rates with you folks and it's been turned down. So he may be at the point where he doesn't think anything's gonna happen.
Well, yeah, but this is his time to try to make something happen, right here at this meeting.
But is it true that he's made attempts to get a reduction with no success? Is that true?
No, that's not true. Okay? He's got a reduction right now in a sense, but he hasn't been here. But there's no one from his organization here to sell it. And that's what upsets me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I gotta leave.
Okay.
Thank you, Frank.
Would you give your name and address?
Um, Chris Mitchell, 607 Dalmatian Drive. We're new to the area. And, um, we've been meeting a lot of new people to this area that are also new. And no one's moved here because of the golf course. I, I just wanna say that first. When we looked around for a place to move, um, having the golf course was not a major thing for us. Now, it's possible for some other people that might, might be a consideration. But as a, a resident here now, and I used to be a council member from where I came from, um, number one is always the use of public funds to benefit a private industry. We need to be real careful when we do that because we set precedence for who is the next private business that will be given handouts. And, and we have to be clear, it's a handout. Because the rates are set by you guys. And if we're gonna fluctuate for one private industry, then why aren't we gonna fluctuate for someone else that is now gonna come in and want some favors too? Um, economic development is very, very important. But, and, and I'm new, so I, I could be, um, misunderstanding, but uh, many places have economic development funds where a business can get like a low-interest loan. Um, and we always did economic development through the Economic Development Corp. that we had in, in our small city. Um, and, and that was a good way of saying that we want development. But you'll come in and borrow the money and, and, and pay this low-interest rate loan, which was always lower than a bank. And, and that, I think, was a nice way of the city saying, "We are in favor of growth." But I find it hard to believe that we would wanna start to benefit one private company over many other businesses in this area. And, and at the expense of all the people that live here because that money would have to be made up somewhere. And I would assume that it would have to be in the water rates for the rest of the residents. So, that's my concern and that's, when I saw this in the paper, I really felt I wanted to come down and voice my opinion. Someday I might be up there, so, um...
Yeah, you could do it today if you'd like.
It must make it clear, this money is coming from money that was earmarked for economic development and it is not coming from the water fund.
So, anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir?
Doug McAndries, 527 Dalmatian. Welcome to the neighborhood. Um, I am a golfer. In fact, I just got back from golfing out at Four Mile. And, uh, just a couple of things that come to mind, overstating the obvious, of course, is what other businesses in town rely so heavily on water? I mean, in that amount of water. You know, golf courses without water, they go under. Um, and it's my understanding, and I guess it's a question to you guys, is this is stair-step down after a three-year period of time? So you're not funding them entirely from now till ever? After three years, you could get completely out from underneath this and wash your hands of it and then everybody's happy.
Thank you, Doug. How'd you do? Good round? Yes, sir?
Good afternoon. I'm Gary Hornsby, husband of Valerie. We sold our house in Pebble West approximately a year, approximately one year ago. And the main reason we sold the house is because we got tired of all the drug raids that were occurring next door about one, one a month for illegal grow operations. But we, we were able to sell our house at a, for a handsome profit. And, and, uh, eventually buy a house and we moved to Telegraph Trail. Uh, at Four Mile Ranch. And we really love our house. As, as my wife said, we, we want this to be our forever house. And I heard someone mention that it might become a goat field or a, or a desolate prairie. You know, if it's left alone, um, I think you're probably gonna have a lot of different problems such as illegal grow operations and many other things if you just let it go. I think that, uh, we as a community have to come together and, and, and figure out what exactly is the future of Canyon City. Do we wanna be, as someone said, a known for being prisons or just being a prison community? Or do we, do we wanna be known for many various versatile endeavors? Um, I'm retired from the Army, retired cop, and I still have to work part-time. But there's a lot of people that have moved out there. They've, they've invested their money. And they can probably sell their property and move on and, and the, all the, all the property, uh, rates will, will rise and rise where it becomes unaffordable for a lot of people. I, I just see a domino effect occurring. I really hope that you will consider assisting, uh, this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, um, let's go ahead and have a discussion at council. Mr. Gill?
Tony? Yes? Do we have any performance goals set for them for like year one, two, three? Is there any expectations at the end of, uh, like the end of 2018 of the things that should, that should have been accomplished?
Uh, we discussed, but the only thing they're willing to agree to is that, uh, they would build model homes out there. They won't specify how many, but they have a inherent interest to show progress and momentum at that potential significant development. So they would commit to building model homes. Their primary commitment is to simply maintain and operate the golf course.
Okay. Like I said, Mike, if we're doing this, it'd be nice to see, I mean, the folks have some concerns and have some, you know, very valid concerns. Um, you know, doing this with, uh, with a measurable goal. And I don't know what those goals would be, but because that's somebody else's job.
Well, we've, again, we've discussed that with them, but they've rejected any numerical or objective measurable number, for example, housing starts in each of the respective three years. Not willing to accept that as a risk. The only thing they're willing to accept is they will build model homes to generate future sales. But they won't put a number on, you know, how many new rooftops are gonna be generated over the next three years. Again, this is not a developer. Kevin is a finance person. He wants to unload this asset. But we'd like him to maintain it to a point where it can be sold. And then, most importantly, successfully develop because the long-term benefits to the community are significant.
Is there any way that if these unclear goals are not met and they do, uh, pack their bags and leave town, um, is there any way we could put a lien on the property and get the money back for the city to invest in another uh, community development project, should this one fail?
I got a better idea.
Certainly could explore that, but again, the, the developer has to agree to these conditions, so I can't...
Well, if he's gonna pack up and bail out, um, and we put a lien on it, I mean, just, just thinking out loud, trying to, to say, "Okay, fine, we don't have the goals, but, um, where can we recoup this money if it, if it is a failure?"
Sure, sure. And I, I get your point.
Which I honestly, I think there's probably a ninety-nine percent success rate here.
Yeah.
But it is a valid concern, a valid question.
Talked to Corey about that. We wouldn't be the only ones waiting in line.
Mr. Weed?
I, you're wildly optimistic. I would give this a ten percent success rate, maybe. Um, I, I think, uh, I've heard some really good remarks and they probably mirror some of the things I've been thinking, but, uh, I'll start off with, this is obviously an investor who saw an opportunity to pick up a piece of property and flip it and make some money on it. Um, but it's clear, he's, he's, and he's an investor, not a developer. This is someone looking for somebody to develop this piece of property. As an investor, I believe, like the comment was made, he had to have seen these expenses that were going to be coming while he was doing whatever it was he was doing to cultivate a market for this piece of property. I think Jeff Mueller made a great point. Uh, he came in, he was under-capitalized apparently. Otherwise, I, I don't think we'd even be having this conversation. Um, and, uh, the, uh, John Paul and, uh, uh... And the, John Paul and, who, John Hammer, they raised the point. This is one of the things I specifically wanted to talk about, is kind of the idea of a quid pro quo, or what do we get out of this? Or, you know, and I'm going to, it's kind of an analogy, it's different, but it's got a lot of the same elements. Business I'm in involves a lot of advertising, and the risk in advertising is all on the advertiser. The media, or the medium, doesn't have any of the risk. They just take your money and put your product out, and you either make money or you don't, and that's the way it works. And it's kind of funny, over the years, you know, and I've been told over and over again, you know, "Do this, and you're going to make tons of money." It's like, "Great, I'll tell you what, let's partner on this. You pay for it, and I'll give you 50% of everything I make. Every dollar I make, I'll give you 50 cents of it." And so that's, I mean, that's a terrible one-to-one, that's a terrible return rate on an investment. You don't make anything, you just got your money back. Or in my case, it's like I'm working on, assuming I have a 50% profit margin, which I don't, and in all the years that I've offered this, and I've offered this for probably 15 years, I've never had anybody say, "Yeah, I'll do that." So, my proposal would be, he continues to pay for the water, and we'll put that money in a fund, and we'll just sit on it. And if, three years from now, there's model homes out there, and there's a developer who has actually come in and taken over the project, and has shown some real interest in developing this Del Webb-style community, or whatever they envision it to be, you get your money back. And if that doesn't happen, then we keep the money. You know, and I'm really inclined to agree with Frank. I mean, it's, to have this meeting on December 12th, and being told in 19 days, "The golf course is going to close if we don't provide free water," is very difficult to swallow. I mean, I can't believe that it was just last week that he saw this coming. So, this is too late, way too late to be having the conversation, and, I mean, I can't, I won't support giving the water away. I'll support selling the water with the opportunity to get your money back if you follow through and actually develop something, but that's where I'm at.
Ms. Mark?
Me too. He's been talking to us for nearly a year, and I'm kind of feeling that way, too. Kind of a pig in a poke. First to last month, we didn't hear that he was closing the golf course. In fact, this is the first time I've heard about it, so I'm kind of surprised about it. I am all for, "Yeah, let's do a quid pro quo, and we'll, you give us this for that, and, you know, let's do something where the city doesn't end up the loser." I hate to see it go. It is beautiful out there, but I kind of feel like we're just being threatened. I kind of feel like it's, "Well, this is it, or I'm taking my Jackson and going home." And I just, I wish it'd come to us in October, so we would have had some more time to figure something out.
Well, and I'll say, I'm, it concerns me that, I mean, obviously, I haven't had the conversa, I've never met Mr. Quinn, so I don't know anything about him, but it concerns me that he's not willing to make any commitment, certainly any written commitment. And, you know, as like Mark was saying, with no commitment, there's nothing to prevent you from packing your bags and walking out of town and leaving it, just walk away from the project.
Anyway, yeah.
Well, Ms. Ray, I would like to point out, though, I think probably what triggered this possibility of closing in January 1st is something that I had said several times when we were studying the water rates recently, which, by the way, we're voting on next week in December. That when we were discussing the water rates, the possibility in our conversations that the golf course's water rates could triple, and that that could be debilitating to any business at all, especially, I mean, let alone one that completely depends on water, that we needed to have a conversation with the golf course owners. And for quite a while, we hadn't had that conversation until just very recently, and he did fly in from Boston last week to sit down and have a discussion. And that, I just figured it was a given. If you're tripling somebody's water rates, they're going to close their doors, especially if they're already losing $200,000. That's, that is not, if they're $200,000 in the hole every single year recently, that's just not a huge surprise to me, that's just basic economics. But the bigger picture here is beyond Kevin Quinn, it's beyond the golf course. It's about the future development of Sun Canyon or Four Mile in general, and the growth of Canyon City, and the possibility of attracting and marketing to that 55-plus active retiree market, that those are quality residents that can move into Canyon City. Many of those types of residents are exactly the kind we need, that can be involved, volunteer, and be part of community assets to us in general, or maybe small business owners to keep themselves occupied during their retirement. It's an ex, it's bigger than Kevin. It's about economic development, the future of Canyon City as a whole, and the potentially marketing and tapping into incredible tax revenues. If it works, and I'm with you, though, Dennis, you know, my, they were supposed to do some developments starting this year, and we didn't see anything happen, so I'm very reluctant in, you know, what will really happen. But I do believe, if we don't keep that golf course open for the next three years, the possibility of giving, him being able to sell that to a good developer to actually do something in there will be gone forever. It'll be absolutely lost asset to our community.
Well, I mean, again, go back to Jeff here, it's, you know, maybe it's kind of a corny concept, but the whole concept of the Shark Tank is, so, you're asking us for money. What are we getting? Give us something.
Well, let's make a point here. We've been giving him reduced water rates for as long as Bob Hartman can remember in the history of that golf course. They have been getting reduced water rates. He's just asking for a continuance of that for the next three years, just in a different form. Instead of cutting it from the water rates, we're giving that benefit, that community asset to our, you know, we have so few assets in Canyon City as it is. He's just asking, "Can we maintain this asset instead of coming from the water fund? Can we get this from the Economic Development Fund?"
There's a lot. I negotiate for my living. I hear things like cradle lean, I hear, I personally think rates, land in lieu of, no lump sums, spec homes that won't kick in until April, and then there could be a stepped-up possibly rate increase, that was not mentioned a lot. I too like the Shark Tank idea. This is somewhat drastic, but it ought to be painful enough to spur someone into doing something. And I believe there's also, there's 1,400 acres there. I think that we could discuss the possibility of the city getting some of that. Certainly, a lien, I think, should be not that big of a problem, he understands that. That could be negotiated, forgiven, or paid off. But in thinking about this, and I have a long time, I think there's some negotiation tools here that we can do. Maybe this is the first, I don't know. I don't want to close either. I'm not a golfer, but I am concerned, there's 30,000 rounds, we're told, that go through that course. Is two or three bucks going to kill you? I don't know. Would you pay $3 more?
If I had to, yes.
Okay.
But that's just for personal...
Well, you play it twice. Mr. Arie. Mr. Arie, you were waving your hand.
Yeah, I think, I would agree with everything council's talking about. I would ask council to at least, rather than make a decision not to do it today, at least get them word that you are going to look at it. I think you've got to realize, what happened at Shadow Hills was the, there was a contingent of group that said, "You know, I'm not a golfer, and people don't move here because of golf." So, you hear that voice of not to vote, but you look up and down the Arkansas River, every single town from the beginning all the way to the Kansas line has a golf course. 90% of those golf courses are subsidized by cities. Canyon City would be the only town on the whole entire Arkansas Basin that doesn't have a golf course. Do you want to be that city? I think at a minimum, you say, "Okay, I don't like the fact that we've been threatened." You know, let's, you know, they're not going to use a ton of water in January, they're not going to use a ton of water in February. Give it 30 days, 60 days, 90 days to work out an agreement of some kind, because if you, if they do close it, not saying they will, but if they do close it, now we have a four and a half, five million, some people claim eight million dollar investment in the community that those people put in, not Mr. Quinn, but a different group, that's going to be gone. Once you lose it, it's gone. So, you know, I don't think the decision has to be made right now, right here, exactly how you're going to do it. I just think the city needs to take the right step forward to protect the asset. It's no different than a park, or a swimming pool, or whatever it is that you want to think Fremont County or Canyon City has as an asset. The government has to subsidize every single park we have. Every single swimming pool we have, we subsidize it. I don't think you can look at it as a non-subsidized entity. Maybe it takes some level of assistance to keep a golf course alive. Maybe that's what every single town up and down the Arkansas River has done besides Canyon City.
Mr. Mayor, Ryan, I would like to hear from our Economic Development Specialist, if we could. Ryan, do you mind addressing us about this issue?
Could, just, can Bill respond real quickly?
Yes, Bill, go ahead.
One thought, maybe we could do a partnership if this goes, doesn't go through with the, your golf course. And the golf course is there, the piping is there, maybe we could do a partnership where we can keep some of the property and sell it, and the city runs the golf course. I'm talking about Shadow Hills.
I'd just like to interject one other thing, that, you know, the city subsidizing economic development is, it's certainly not without precedent. A couple of years ago, I believe the city forewent water tap fees in an effort to try and stimulate some economic, well, some growth, some construction. I don't know what the numbers of that really bore out to be relative...
250,000.
So, we subsidized 250,000 to help create some economic development in the community.
Right?
Yeah. You know, when you look at Canyon City and you take away the bridge and the outdoor amenities, you know, the two things that Canyon City sells itself on, you know, one's being the banana belt of Colorado, the other one is, you know, being a retirement community, a community that's attractive to retirees. And there are quite a few retirees that like to golf. I think Mr. Arie is correct, you know, once this asset is gone, it will be gone forever. This is one of those things that is very attractive to people that are in that 55-plus age group, and, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, again, you know, looking down the Arkansas River, we'd be the only community without a golf course. I was hosting a site selector yesterday, a site selector from Michigan, and, you know, he couldn't believe the weather, he couldn't, you know, we took him by the golf course, he couldn't believe the, you know, great asset that we had in the community, and that, you know, on a day like today, in the middle of December, you know, you could go out and golf. You know, he is from Michigan, he had a foot of snow on the ground when he left, and, you know, those are the types of things that help sell the community.
I'd like to go, did you have something, or I'd like to start getting toward a conclusion of some type from council? So, did you want to add something, Tony, or?
I was just going to suggest, certainly, you don't have to make a definitive decision tonight, but based on your feedback, you've made some points that we could talk to Kevin about his potential conditions, you know, X number of model homes that he would guarantee building. We have talked about, and he would grant the city the first right of refusal to the acquisition of the course, so if he did walk away, we'd be first in line if we wanted to acquire it. We can talk about liens, but we'd have to know exactly what position we were in, we could talk to Cory about that. He certainly has talked about, and is willing to provide land in lieu of, most of the land would probably be for recreational purposes, that would be subject to a public vote. So, I don't know whether you want to consider that, but he's open to that. He is absolutely land-rich, so that's not a big issue for him. And then he's certainly factoring in that there will be marginal golf fee increases as part of this agreement, that he's already agreed to. But this is also a very competitive arena. We've looked at the other golf courses in the area, Pueblo West, Pueblo and Colorado Springs. You'd think there was price fixing, because the prices are almost universally the same. So, if someone steps slightly out of line, there's clearly going to be an adverse impact on that course, because they're almost all the same rates.
It's like gas stations, one raises the price, they all do.
Well, actually, the Colorado Springs is too cold, and Pueblo West, you could hit with tumbleweed. If you're listening from Pueblo West, I'm sorry, but I'm a strong Canyon Cityite. I think these things have to be put out there. I would feel comfortable about that, and just as a negotiation, I think we should talk about liens, talk about the land. You're right, our charter says that we can't take recreational parkland without a view of the people. However, there's things like one-dollar option or something like that would cordon off a huge portion of the state, "That's kind of ours." You know what I mean? But I believe, I like the Shark Tank, as a matter of fact, the idea, but that's awful, isn't it? But I think we should. I think it should, in all fairness to the people, to the money, it's a tremendous help for them, it is a tremendous asset, I agree, but we ought to have some things in there that, especially the spec homes, that should be a requirement, that will create activity. Now, for my business, it will, okay, activity, and probably the roofs that we're looking for out there. It should be a requirement, and maybe even to the point of hold back until they're kind of done. Make it slightly uncomfortable.
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to put it out, just put it out and say, "What are you going to give us for this?" I mean, I can say economic development is an investment, but you're investing in something, and you expect some kind of a return, or you have an anticipation of a return. And, I mean, you, I think we would be doing ourselves a disservice if we didn't quantify what we were expecting.
Yeah, we could, based upon this feedback, we can have that discussion and get back to the council at their first meeting in January.
Yeah, well, and I just wanted to, just to comment on something Ashley had said, when we, we, the next Monday, we're going to be talking about approving the water rate increase. We left our last meeting, I think, leaving it pretty clearly on the table that we were going to specifically talk about golf course water rates, and, you know, I'm going to throw this, and parks. And, you know, it was mentioning, it's, because the city parks have been getting the real benefit of this reduced water rate as well. And city parks are a benefit to everybody in the city, I mean, whether you take advantage of them or not, that's a benefit. I mean, whether you take advantage of them or not, that's a benefit. And so, you know, I don't know that I'm, I've given a lot of thought, and I don't know that I am in favor of increasing the water rates on parks. And if I go there, I may say, carry that over to the golf courses as well, but.
Okay.
Right, well, I would like to see us have more conversations with Kevin, within mind that we need to look at the big picture to the future of Canyon City overall and that out of all of the things that, in our public survey, that were top priorities for our citizens, economic development, I believe, was number one.
Yes.
Above and beyond anything else. And we need to think of this as an economic development.
Okay, let's draw to a conclusion. So are those the things that we can agree on, that we're very favorable for this help with the water, subject to our discussion of those things such as liens and timing those first spec homes? That more than anything, I can assure you, will make quite a difference there. Possibility of a rate schedule discussion and liens and things like that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One thing I'd really like to see if we have another discussion on this is if somebody from that organization, that can bring something to the table, a nod of a head, a shake of a head, or bring their ideas in rather than doing this long distance. I think that that's just kind of imperative.
So you want a representative at our next meetings?
Pardon me?
You want a representative at the next meeting?
Correct. Somebody that can make a decision and, you know, and say, yeah, this works for us, but maybe with a little modification, this would work better for us and you, you know, one of those things. It's, like I said, a long-distance negotiation is, it's very difficult to try to get anything done in a timely manner.
Yeah, I was a little disappointed that there wasn't somebody here to ask questions of, because I came with a lot of questions and, you know.
If it was $300,000 to me, I'd be at the meeting.
The, I mean, one of the questions I wanted to ask is, so 30,000 people golf there this year, what's the course's capacity and what are you doing to get close to that? If you had 60,000 people golfing there a year, would you have a problem? It's, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, thank you all. Let's, Kathy, would you recap what we just talked about?
Just so I make sure we're clear that, you're gonna go ahead and negotiate, Tony, first right of to the course, possible lien, land acquisition, marginal fee for increase to users, spec homes, and a rate schedule.
Someone mentioned a clubhouse.
Well, clubhouse is in the long-term agreement that you.
I understand that.
That would be the negotiations that's set forth for us as waters.
Yeah, that would be the.
Mayor and Council, this is Corey. Can I, can I just add, ask a clarified question?
Yes, you may.
From this discussion, I'm assuming you would like any options that might involve sort of the Shark Tank mentality? So if, for example, there was a form of a management agreement where the city got a stake in the golf course, temporary or permanent, that the examples you were talking about with the right of first refusal, the dollar option, the liens, are all just examples of trying to get a stake in the golf course for its long-term success? Is that a fair statement?
Yes, we're putting a sizable amount of money in there. Yes, the answer's yes.
Okay, so I don't want to limit it to what, if there are other things we come up with that might, that might be mutually agreeable, I want to make sure that we can, we can explore those as well.
Okay.
Yeah, sure, get creative.
Anything else?
Remember right now, this is just a three-year thing.
It's just three years.
It's just a three-year thing, we don't need their firstborn child.
We don't want to overburn it or give the mayor free golf, we don't want to do that.
Is this coming back to the January Council?
I think realistically, we'd probably schedule this for January 15th. I'll talk to Kevin this evening, we'll try to get something drafted well in advance of the 15th, then try to see if he's physically present.
Or at least a representative that can.
He's the only one that's gonna represent.
I don't know what his organization is like, so.
Very lean, it's him.
Okay. Anything else, anything in the audience? Thank you all, thank you for coming.
Tony, have a great time in Spain.
Thank you.
Christmas in Spain.
Maybe if I visit golf courses, I can write this off.
Okay. We're adjourned, thank you.